We will get started in just a minute here. We do want to remind the audience that there will be no endorsements. That includes no political tees, flyers, or any buttons being worn today in our forum. So if you do have a political tee, we ask that you turn it inside out in order to, again, respect the rules of today's forum. And we'll get started in just a second here until we have all of our candidates. All right, we're at six o'clock, so we're going to go ahead and get started to respect everybody's time. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to this evening's candidate forum for the City of Wasico Commissioners. We're very grateful for your time and for you joining us today as we listen to the candidates for the City of Wasico and their platforms. It's very important for us to be able to offer opportunities like this to the candidates so that we can hear what their stance is on certain concerns and issues here in our community. And as part of the Wasico Area Chamber of Commerce, we're very proud to be able to present these types of programs. The Wasico Chamber of Commerce is a business resource organization. We are a nonprofit private entity, and our goal is to support the businesses here in the Wasico and Mid Valley area through different programs and activities, including candidate forums. The mission of the chamber is as follows: Together with our partners, we provide leadership to advance a prosperous economy that enhances quality of life in our community. Just a few reminders for tonight's event. There will be no endorsements allowed, as it is our goal to provide an avenue for candidates to share their platform and speak to our members and the community at large. This evening's event is also being streamed live for those joining us online. For the audience, we're glad that you're here. We're glad that you're here to learn and hear from the candidates. We thank you for continuing to want to learn from the candidates and be informed voters. We encourage you to go out and let others know, and again, encourage people to vote. We ask that at this time you silence your phones to respect the responses of our candidates this evening. And we also remind you that this evening's forum is a presentation-style event and not a debate. The candidates will be asked a question by our moderator this evening, and they will be given a time to respond to each of those questions. We ask that there is no audience participation today. We ask that there is no clapping, because this is not a rally. We ask that there is no cheering and no booing. This is about the candidates, not the audience. At this time, I would like to introduce one of our board members from the Wasico Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Daniel Montes, to share a few words.
Thank you. And good evening. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here. You know, apathy is probably the worst thing that we can have in a community in our world, because apathy means that we don't care. Conflict is good. Disagreements are good if they're done in a constructive way. And tonight, you know, we're hoping to hear viewpoints from the candidates. And it is important that we participate in this process, because these folks will be representing us. And it is important that we understand the process, that we obey the process, and that we follow the process to the conclusion. I do want to thank you for being here, because like I said earlier, your being here, your presence here, means that you have a vested interest. We should all have a vested interest. And it is important that we understand that our presence here means that we care about our community. And that's really the best thing that we can teach our children, is that to participate in government, to participate in our society, is very, very important. We want to also be able to be part of the decision-making. So thank you for being here, and I hope that we have a constructive and good evening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Once again, on behalf of the Wasico Chamber, I would like to say thank you to all of our candidates for their willingness to be here today and share their platforms. Thank you so much for doing that and being able to be here and share with our community. And at this time, I would like to introduce our moderator, Dr. Jorgensen from South Texas College. She's a political science professor at the college here in Wasico, and we'd like to invite her to be our moderator this evening.
Good evening. Thank you to the chamber for hosting the event. Thank you to all of you for showing up. As I tell my students, local politics is important. All politics is local. Do you know who to call when the lights turn off, or you lose your power? So it's important to understand local government as well as national government. I'd like to begin tonight by having the candidates give a two-minute opening statement, and we'll start with Mr. Farias.
I want to start off by thanking God for continuing to give me the courage, the strength, to continue to run, to be by my side, especially these last three years. My name is Adrian Farias. I am your city commissioner for District Four. I am the grandson of Donel Farias Senior, Benidip Farias, Francisco Caballero, AKA Pancho, Flora Caballero, my co-pilot. My parents are Donel and Belia Farias, my sibling, my only brother, Leo Farias, my wife, Amanda Marie Lopez. I don't say that very often, so Amanda Marie Farias. My daughters, Adely Sofia Farias, Anaya Carolina Farias, my AK. I love you guys. Thank you for always being there for me. I truly appreciate it. I'm from Wasico. I was raised in Wasico. I went to school here in Wasico, elementary. I graduated from Wasico High School. After that, I went on to SDC, where I got my associate's degree in business administration. I then went on to UTPA, also known as UTRGV, where I got my bachelor's degree in business finance. So as you can see from what I'm telling you about my education, it all started here in Wasico. Wasico is my home. It's always been my home, and will always be my home. I've advocated for Wasico for many years. I continue to want to be here in Wasico, and I want to continue to be your voice for the City of Wasico. Again, my name is Adrian Farias. I am your city commissioner of District Four.
Thank you. Mr. De Leon?
Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for providing us an opportunity to share our platform and our ideas. My name is Jesus Eloy De Leon. I am 55 years old, and I've been married to my beautiful wife for 36 years, Deborah Ann De Leon. We have two amazing sons, Orlando De Leon and Dylan De Leon, and we have five beautiful grandchildren: Avia, Carson, Easton, Noah, and Nolan. If anybody has grandkids in here, then you understand the love of a grandfather and grandmother to their grandchildren. Those kiddos have my heart. They truly do. I was raised by two loving parents, Eloy and Flora De Leon, and I was raised in a very modest home, but it was filled with a lot of love and caring. A lot of my inspiration to run for office actually comes from them, and especially my mother, because she instilled a sense of giving and sharing. As a married couple, my wife and I, with two young kids, finally saved enough money to buy a home. And so we were looking to where we were going to lay our family foundation and raise our two young boys. We visited many towns, and we visited many sites. And at 2301 Highland Drive here in Wasico, we found the right place. I know that I was not born in Wasico, but I made a lifelong decision that my family was going to call Wasico home. And so now I'm here before you, asking for an opportunity to serve you. We have some wonderful residents in Wasico, and as I've met them, I'm more than ever determined to serve them. Thank you for being here tonight, and God bless. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. My name is Leo Munoz, and I'm seeking reelection for commissioner-at-large. Commissioner-at-large means that everybody in the City of Wasico now votes for a commissioner, not just in one district. To you a little bit about myself, I've been living here in Wasico for 21 years. I am a mechanical engineer by trade. I have a growing business here in Wasico that we do consulting engineering. We hire highly skilled, highly valued jobs, people. I've been living here for 21 years. Seven of those years, I've been your stating commissioner. And as you can see, we've done a whole lot in seven years, you know, street improvements, new parks, new police department, new fire station. And there's a lot that we still have that has not been completed. And that's why I'm seeking reelection, so that we can see the projects that we have in plans come to fruition. I'm open to anybody who likes to approach me and ask me questions, and I look forward to serving you all in the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the chamber for this opportunity for the community to get to know us as candidates, so they can go out and make the choice of their own. I want to thank God for putting me in this position. I really strongly feel that, you know, he put this in front of me for a reason, and that's, you know, to serve Wasico. My name is Israel Gonzalez Jr., lifelong resident here in Wasico. Born, raised, everything here in Wasico. All my family has been here from probably early, early 40s and 50s. All my family has all roots here in Wasico. So a lot of that drives me to go ahead and serve the community, put my experience, put my knowledge, and put my, all my, I'd say, passion into serving the community of Wasico. My parents are Israel and San Juanita Gonzalez. We own an embroidery business here in Wasico, been in business for over 22 years. We serve the community, and that's what we are. We're servants. We're servants for the community. I can't express how much appreciation I have for my family for being there for support. And, you know, with that being said, I'll let the forum go ahead and take its place so we can answer our questions. But just know that my heart, my soul, my roots are all here for Wasico. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The first question I would like to ask you tonight is one that is very important, of course, to the voters and to the City of Wasico, and that, of course, is the drainage system. How would you go about addressing the drainage problems that we have here in Wasico and in the Mid Valley? And I would like to start with Mr. Gonzalez. You have one minute to respond.
Which question was that again? I'm sorry?
The drainage question, it's question number...13.
Well, I know that we've made a lot of strides, so I'm not here to say that, you know, we're not making strides in this area. I know that there's a lot of, you know, funding that needs to be done, you know, to continue improving this area in our city and in the Mid Valley, because obviously, you know, when it did hit, it hit hard. You know, I would like to continue to explore the areas of where we need improvement, prioritize those areas, and kind of go back to, piggyback on what's been working for us and what hasn't, right? So, you know, again, I know a lot of it goes back to funding. So, you know, when those budgets come out, we got to analyze them, and then, you know, you got to rob from Peter to pay Paul. We have to do that, right? So long as the city and the taxpayers and those affected people are seeing that there's progress, you know, and then we circle back around with them and let them know the whys. The whys, it's going to happen. Why it can't happen-
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Sorry, that's time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Munoz?
Thank you. Yes. PPP, plan, prepare, and execute. That's what I do in my business, and that's what I do here in the city commission. We know the City of Wasico has a huge problem with drainage. But if you plan for it, like we did, we planned a bond election in 2020, and we passed it successfully. And you prepare to construct all the infrastructure needed, and then you execute all the plans you have, you would alleviate some of the drainage issues that we have here in Wasico. We've done a whole lot. As a matter of fact, I can proudly say that in the history of Wasico, we've never passed a bond to improve drainage here. And I've committed myself to do it, and I ran, and it got done. And this is just the beginning. There's a lot more coming, and that's why I want to continue to serve.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
I'm sorry, Mr. De Leon.
Sorry. Sorry? I'm sorry, Mr. De Leon.
That's okay. You know, we have so many resources at our disposal right now that need to be used. Wasico must work hand-in-hand with our drainage district and our state and county leaders. To this point, in District Four, we have no water detention pond at this point. There is one that's in the works, but it has not begun to be completed, or even work has begun on it. So we got to make sure that when these funds are available to us, and millions of dollars have been secured by our county leaders, we need to make sure that we're at the bargaining table to secure those funds and make sure that District Four is not passed over again. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Farias?
Yeah, flooding and drainage is a big issue. We've already completed three retention and detention facilities. We have two in the works, one which is going to be in District Four, which will help our area, which is right north of Paisano. We have done work in District Four. We did widen a ditch right north of Sugar Cane and Nebraska. We widened that ditch. We also increased the capacity in that area. We actually added two drainage pipes to help flow the water north and out of that area that flooded in the past. We also opened up the ditch that was right south of Paisano, where it was open before to help alleviate the flooding in that area. We also added a pump that we add there every time it rains or when it's going to rain. We have a drainage committee who's...I try to go monthly. I've attended more than 50% of the meetings there, and we have a task force that is continuously looking at these opportunities to how we can fix this drainage issue. Is it an issue? Yes. But it's also a regional issue. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask is about immigration, which is question 12. We've seen a lot in the news about immigration, so my question is, what effect do you believe the current immigration crisis will have on Wasico, and what should we do to prepare for that? Also, is it an opportunity, or is it a problem? And let's start with Mr. De Leon.
I recently spoke to a retired Border Patrol agent about this issue, and he used to head the, what they call a FIT, intelligence team for our district for the Wasico Border Station. And although there is a problem here in Wasico, mainly the problem is focused more towards the McAllen and Mission area. They've done a tremendous job, because our Wasico Border Patrol Station goes from 281 all the way past Harlington, all the way up north. So they've done a tremendous job in doing this. If these people are crossing illegally, I think that we should not have any part of pain for them. But if they do come here illegally and they're naturalized, I think that they should have the opportunities that everybody else has as well, being physically responsible, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Also, spoke to a good friend of mine that works for the Border Patrol, and a lot like what Mr. De Leon just said, he echoed the same thing, you know, that it's not a, I'd say, a huge problem here in Wasico, more than it is towards Mission, McAllen area, but what we do have and what we do deal with. We'd see it more as of, you know, reaching out to the proper people and letting them kind of handle that situation. But for us, you know, keep building our relationships as a city with the Border Patrol so that they can take the appropriate measures for these people and give them the same opportunities as everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farias?
Yes, the immigration crisis in our border has been going on for many years. And I think when the last presidential election, things changed, and we had a huge influx of immigrants coming over, especially in our area. Is it an opportunity or a threat? You know, you could look at it both ways, you know. The opportunity would be that we would be able to gain dollars, government dollars, to help house these people. But then again, it's a threat, because, you know, we don't want to use our tax dollars on somebody who's not from Wasico. We want to utilize our money here. We want to put our taxpayers first at the end of the day. And so I think, I think we've been, the Border Patrol, customs people, have been controlling that area. So I think, right now, we're in a good time, a good area. So I think it could be seen as an opportunity, but also a crisis and a threat to a community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Munoz?
It is unfortunate that this situation is happening in today's times. I can only imagine what these people are going through, their living conditions in other countries that forces them to leave and to seek better shelter. I myself was an immigrant, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, was a migrant worker, looking for a better place to make a living. So I can kind of empathize with them. But what can we do in our capacity? I don't think we can do much in our capacity. That's a US Border Patrol issue. It's a US Border Patrol problem that they can handle. If the situation at hand is, if it does occur that they are traveling through this area and they call us to help, of course, we would all jump on board immediately. We would use our firing police department to aid in any possible way. And also, you know, we would volunteer our community services, community facilities that we have, so that we can shelter these immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask is question six on the list. What amenities does Wasico lack in order to attract business, residents, and tourists? And I would like to start with Mr. Munoz on this one.
Thank you. Amenities. I think we have a lot of good amenities right now. What we need to do is maintain, upkeep our current amenities-
What we need to do is maintain, upkeep our current amenities and give the public a better place for them to go enjoy themselves. What amenities are we directly lacking? We currently have a library that will be redone. It's currently under construction, and we currently have plans for a new public swimming pool. I think those are vital amenities that we must have here in Weslaco. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Farias?
Yeah, three years ago, I probably would've said we lacked some of these amenities, but as years have progressed, we have grown as a community. We've improved our drainage. Our residential areas have grown. Our commercial industry has grown, and so has our industrial has grown. I like to say that we're probably one of the safest cities in the valley. You know, we're the only city in the valley that has a customs department, a Border Patrol Department, a sheriff substation, and then we have Weslaco's finest, and we have a Texas Department of Safety. So when we say lack of amenities, you know, I think we're in the process of doing more. You know, we're in the process of creating a capital improvement project where we're gonna be creating trails, like Commissioner Munoz said, we're gonna be doing a new library, a state-of-the-art, competing with McAllen, and then we're also gonna be bringing a pool to our community as well. So I think we're growing. I think our downtown is being revitalized, and so I think we're in the right, we're going in the right direction, and I think we need to continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
Like I said, I really like the way Weslaco's going. So yeah, we do have some good amenities right now. I'd like to see, you know, something that is overt by the Mission-McAllen area that I think would attract more business over here would be a good bike trail. You know, that would also be something that would attract businesses this way, more bikes, more people coming this way. Also, I'd love to see, you know, the pool that they're talking about, but also strategize on where we can put some more splash pads for our kids, and so they won't be so far away from, you know, just one or two splash pads. But, you know, those are things that I have envisioned if I do get elected here with Weslaco.
Thank you. And Mr. Deleon?
Yes, I really enjoyed the 2022 comprehensive plan addendum that was presented by UTSA at the July 5th Board Meeting. I invite all our residents to look that meeting up on YouTube. It was quite, it was really nice. They had some fantastic ideas that the city needs to consider. Beautifying our city will attract, all three of them, businesses, tourism, and residents. They talked about improving our parks and recreation facilities, developing downtown parklets, and enhancing the overhaul, overall streetscape in Texas Boulevard. They even talked about an arts project where local artists could display their work in our, in local alleyways and beautify even our downtown area at that point. Unfortunately, District Four still remains the only district in Weslaco that does not have a park, recreational facility there, and I intend, if elected, to be the advocate of the building of that park in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask ties into education. Question seven. What are your ideas on fostering partnerships between the city and higher education institutes such as UTRGV, STC, and Texas A&amp;M Kingsville? And I would like to start with Mr. Farias.
Thank you. And I just want to add, we do have a park in District Four. We just broke ground not too long ago. It does have a splash pad. It does have a volleyball court. It does have a tennis court. It does have a basketball court. Now, in regards to the higher education in our city and working with our city, we house UTRGV. I'm an alumni of STC. We have a partnership with STC right now, where we have a workforce communication program with them. We have Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. This one is due to me because when I was on the EDC Board, may he rest in peace, Mr. Peterson advocated to bring Texas A&amp;M to Weslaco, which is over here on 1015. But those aren't our only partners. We've worked, we've also partnered with Valley Grande Institute, which played a huge, huge role during our pandemic. They were the ones here helping with our community, give out vaccinations. We have other trades. We have a South Texas Vocational Technical Institute for trades, so it's not just about these universities. There's other options out there besides these, and we've been utilizing those as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, thank you. We are fortunate in the Mid Valley to already have UTRGV, STC, and probably soon we'll have Texas A&amp;M here. So what we have to do is, we need to reinforce the partnerships that we already have in place, and with demand will come new institutions. So as long as the city is prospering, as long as the quality of life is good and we attract more and more citizens, more and more businesses, higher education entities will come this way. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deleon?
Yes, and just to reiterate on something, Mile 11 is not part of District Four. I'm 100% on board with fostering and continuing to nurture these partnerships and relationships. First and foremost, these institutions educate our local students and produce talent that can benefit from the local workforce. They also purchase local goods and services and employ people from our community. Secondly, it provides our students with the option to locally earn college credit hours without having that travel expense that you would have going to Edinburgh, McAllen, and across Texas for that matter. And our school district does a fantastic job having this partnership with these institutions. Dual enrollment at the high school level has saved our families thousands and thousands of dollars in tuition money. We must continue to nurture these relationships with these institutions.
Thank you. And Mr. Gonzalez?
Well, I'm fortunate enough to have my wife as a counselor, and she does work hand in hand with a lot of universities. So, you know, she is a counselor, Donna North, and she's built a lot of relationships through these networks, right? So, so long as we have it here in the Mid Valley, what we can do is attract some of these students down this way, move into Weslaco, and that, it's a plus-plus for everybody. The students won't have to be traveling, number two, and number two would be, you know, having these students move into Weslaco so that they don't have to be traveling, they go to our local restaurants, booming our economy here in Weslaco, occupy some of our apartments, and so it's a win-win. I'm glad that we are in the Mid Valley and we get to partner up with the Mercedes's of the world, the Donnas of the world, Progresso, Elza, and bring some of those students to live here in Weslaco.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask is question two. What are the top two issues for Weslaco you plan to tackle during your term, if elected? And I would like to start with Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, I mean, not to beat a dead horse, right? But of course, we're gonna continue looking at our drainage issues, you know, the infrastructures. How can we continue to improve our situation of, you know, always flooding? Attack those areas. And number two is to expand, improve our parks for the youth sports, and not only youth sports, for the adults. Adult sports also, you know, Weslaco at one time, when I was growing up, was very, very well-known for a lot of the adult sports, would be flag football, softball, 5Ks, and that's gone away. So I'd like to refocus on that and bring some of that, you know, focus back down here to Weslaco. So those are the two areas that I like to tackle.
Thank you. Mr. Farias?
Yeah, thank you very much, and I want to reiterate, Mile 11 Park is in our district. We went and checked the map. I was actually attacked because I declined it when it was over budget. Top two issues we have here in Weslaco is, of course, I have to reiterate, and like everybody's gonna say, it's drainage. Drainage has been a big issue. We've gone back and forth with that, but we have a lot of projects coming up. You know, the one in District Four is huge. It's gonna help all those families in the Paisano area. I think it's something we need to keep, continue doing. I attended a water development board where they keep informing us, it's not just our city, it's a regional issue that we have, and we've got to continue to look for ways to get funding, because at the end of the day, that's one of the other issues, is funding, and how we're gonna get this money to fix the drainage issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, thank you. The city has a lot of issues, and some of the issues you don't see is because we've been properly maintaining all the other departments. So it takes a lot of time and effort, not only to control the issues that you currently have, but to maintain the ones that you already have under control. What I plan to do, there's a lot of things. Drainage is a big issue, but we already have a plan for that, and it's working smoothly. Hopefully, or hopefully not, we're never faced with a big storm to test our drainage infrastructure, but what I really want to focus on is parks and streets. Our parks are in dire need of attention, so we need to man up. We gotta put a bigger workforce to make sure that our amenities are enjoyed by the constituents. And our streets, our streets are in constant wear and tear, and I would like to double up on the workforce we have, buy more trucks until we can repair, you know, streets quicker. Thank you. Those are the two things that I really want to focus on this coming four years. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Deleon?
Yes, with this question, we have to keep in mind that our residents have varying concerns and needs. While flooding may be a concern to some, to some, it's not flooding. As we've walked the streets, some of our residents indicate that flooding is not an issue for them. Inadequate lighting, lack of sidewalks, those are the concerns that they have. Some of our residents have concerns of speeding in their neighborhoods, and some would like to see a bigger police presence. I want the residents to know that not one or two problems is bigger than the other. If elected, I want to be able to tackle every single concern and need that they have and not just two. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask is question eight. What is the role of the City Commission in supporting business growth? And I'll start with Mr. Deleon.
Yes, as a City Commission, we have to continue to support our amazing Weslaco EDC. Executive Director Steve Valdez and his staff have done a tremendous job in promoting businesses and recruiting businesses in our city. A big shout-out also to the EDC Board of Directors. They've done a tremendous job. She's also sitting right here to my right. Barbara and the Chamber of Commerce have done a tremendous job. I watch you from afar, Barbara, and you are a blessing to our community. You really are. Now, having said all that, we have to remember that businesses in Weslaco mean jobs for our residents. It means tax dollars for our base, and these money in turn means that we're able to make these improvements for our city. It all goes hand in hand, and again, supporting these entities and working closely with them will benefit all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez?
I have to echo what Mr. Deleon just said. You know, a great, strong relationship with our EDC is very key for us to keep prospering, booming, creating jobs, but I see it as a win-win situation for the Commission to continue to support our EDC and, no matter who it is that's on the Commission, to continue the growth, continue to prosper, continue to recruit these new people, you know, businesses, into our community so that we can continue to see Weslaco grow, and that's what it's really all about. So I'd see myself playing a very, very key role, you know, to build a great, great relationship with the EDC and, you know, do my part, and if elected, to make sure that Weslaco keeps growing the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Yes, thank you. In what capacity does the City Commission support growth for businesses? Two ways, directly and indirectly. So what do I mean by directly? By directly, I mean, we have a great EDC, Economic Development Corporation. Right now, they're developing 150-acre industrial park that's attracting businesses. That's how we directly affect businesses, by attracting them right where they want to come to work. Indirectly, what kind of services do we provide? We make sure that the streets are safe so that everybody can go from their homes and businesses to the place of shopping. We want to make sure that the restaurants, the stores have proper sanitation so that everything can be kept clean. So those are the types of, and our code enforcement, making sure that there's no restaurant that's doing injustice to the people they serve. So those are the kind of indirectly, kind of services that we indirectly do to benefit the growth of businesses here in Weslaco. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Farias?
Yes, one of the main roles that I think plays a big part, and this partnership that we have with the EDC and the chambers, is making yourself available. Over the past three years, I've made myself available. I'm very fortunate that with my job, that it's very flexible, that I'm able to go to a majority of our ribbon cuttings, our groundbreaking, but also working hand in hand with our Economic Development Board. You know, we have to go to meetings during the day, I make myself available. We have to travel, go to different, out of town for workshops, I make myself available to the community. Since 2019, since being on the Commission, we've created over 800 jobs, we're bringing or creating 800 jobs that are coming to Weslaco. What else do we do? We provide the EDC with ammunition. Like Commissioner Munoz said, we bought 150 acres to bring businesses to Weslaco. So what does that do for our EDC? It gives them the opportunity to go out and look for businesses and say that we do have land, and we do have opportunities and space for them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question I would like to ask is question 10. There have been concerns about a potential national recession. If there is a downturn in the economy and the projects that have been planned have to be revisited, how would you prioritize these projects? And we'll start with Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, you know, we do deal with this a lot, with my past employer, with the HEB, you know. So what we do is we analyze, we prioritize, we strategize, and then we execute, right? So say that the pool project comes up, and the library comes up, but yet we get hit with another storm, then we have to kind of reshuffle the board. So we prioritize, like I said, steal from Peter to pay Paul, tackle that issue first, and kind of identify what is a want and what is a need, and if we kind of vote that way, we're doing the right things for Weslaco. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Capital improvement projects. If you don't have any capital improvement projects, you're a city that's dying, like Valfuria and other areas where they have nothing going on. Every capital improvement project has a budget, and a budget that already has funding for. So a downturn in the economy is not gonna hamper that project. Now, future projects may be hampered, and we'll, you know, tackle those accordingly based on what the economy does. But yeah, but when you have a capital improvement project, funding is already assigned for it, funding is already earmarked for it, we shouldn't have any issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Deleon?
I feel that there are two very important projects that we would not touch. I would definitely not touch any projects concerning drainage in our city. I believe that is an ongoing battle that requires our full attention. My family and I, during the floodings, have tried to get to and from work, and sometimes it's a dangerous drive just trying to get there. Secondly, any deals that have to do with our police department, our fire department, or EMS. They are the ones that provide safety on our streets, and they're the ones that, when you call them, they come to our emergencies. To me, both of these, again, go hand in hand, and the one common denominator in both is that it keeps our citizens safe on the streets of Weslaco.
Thank you. And Mr. Farias?
Yes, thank you. The downturn in the economy and the capital improvement projects is something we were, we planned accordingly. We budgeted responsibly, especially when getting into office, a few months later, we hit a pandemic. We didn't know what was gonna happen. You know, we didn't know how our sales tax was gonna do, and so we budgeted responsibly. And at the end of the day, we ended up having a higher sales tax than we've had in previous years, 10%, 12%, which we've never had in the past. However, we still have to budget responsibly. We have to take care of our projects, our streets. Drainage, of course, is always gonna be there, and we're still gonna continue to work on those, but at the end of the day, we do have a budget. We do have money set aside, and I think we're probably the most fiscally responsible we've ever been. We have an A-minus-minus rating right now, which allows us to borrow money at low interest rates. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for all of your thoughtful responses. We will now go to the closing statements. You all have two minutes each, and we'll start with Mr. Gonzalez.
Well, in closing, I'd like to... Well, in closing, I'd like to let you guys know that, you know, born, raised, all my roots are here in Wesaco. My best interests are here for Wesaco. I'll let you guys know that I have no vast interest in, you know, inflating my pockets. I have no businesses that will have any type of implications on my voting. My voting will be based on three things. That would be, is it the right thing for the city? Is it the right thing for the taxpayers? And can I go home at night, sleep comfortably, and knowing that I did all the right things that night? If those three things check out, that's how my vote's going to go. Lastly, I will not line my pockets and abstain of any kind of vote because it doesn't pertain to me. My vast interest is making the city grow, prosper, and continue to serve as a servant for our community. I want to let you guys know that I come from a very, very, very hardworking family. Everything that we have is because we worked hard for it. Nothing has been given to us. All the Gonzaleses, the Casanobas, the Caballeros, we've worked hard for what we have. And I will bring that to the table. You're not going to outwork me. I'll tell you that right now. Our work ethic comes from the heart, and like my grandpa would always say, "Seremos pobres, pero con clase." Okay? So I will let you guys know that that is what I bring into the table if I get elected for the city of Wesaco. They already told me, go buy yourself some water boots and a poncho because when it rains, you're going to be out there. That is me. I will be out there.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Mr. Farias?
Yes, my name is Adrian Farias. Once again, I am your City Commissioner for District 4. I want to continue to be your voice for District 4. I want to continue advocating for our citizens of Wesaco, but also for all the city employees. The city employees also need a voice, and we've been doing that for the past several years. You know, I make myself available. I'm very fortunate again that with my job, I'm able to take time away during the day to answer questions, return calls. You know, my number hasn't changed. It's been over 15 years that I had the same number. As I said in the beginning, you know, I mentioned my grandparents, and my parents, my wife, my kids. They're my why. They are the reason I decided to run. My grandfathers, my grandmothers, they were always about giving back to the community. You know, my grandfather, the deacon here at St. John's Park for almost 25 years before he passed. My grandfather on my dad's side worked hard to the day he died, but it was always, if you needed something, they would give it to me. They'd take the shirt off my back to give to others. My parents continued to show me love and support, showing me that education is the way, and I was able to get my education. My wife, my kids, they pushed me every single day. They pushed me to be a better person, and that's why I'm here today. I want to continue to do good, continue to move Wesaco in the right direction, continue to move forward with Farias. I want your vote again. I want to be your City District 4 Commissioner again. So November 8th, don't forget to vote. Adrian Farias, reelect. Adrian Farias, your City Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Munoz?
Thank you, everybody, for attending tonight. Why I do this? Why do I serve as a Commissioner? It's a lot of work. Believe me, it's a lot of work. It takes away time from my family, from my personal time as well. But I have to give thanks to God for giving me the health and well-being to serve in this capacity. He also gave me the ganas to do it. And, you know, to those who a lot is given, a lot is expected, and I do see that in myself. My friends and family says, Leo, we trust in you. We need you there. We need a leader in the community that can go out there and make a difference for everybody here. You're the one we have to sacrifice. That's why I do this. I care about my community. I live by one principle: Give expecting nothing thereof. And another one, another principle I live by, leave this better place in a better place than what it was when you were first here. That's what I bring to the table. My area of expertise I bring to the table. I've served, thankfully, by your vote, for seven years already, and we've done a whole lot. And you could see what we've done in this city. You could see the new streets. You could see the new parks. You could see the new facilities. There's a lot more in plans. I want to work on a new recycling center that we so desperately need. I want to work on improving our parks. I want to work on a new pool that we still have there. I want to be part of the new library. And it all can be done with your support. I'm here for you. I'm here for the community. Thank you all. God bless you, and God bless Wesaco.
Thank you. And Mr. De Leon?
Ladies and gentlemen, please forgive me for my nervousness tonight. This is the first time I've ever run for office and obviously my first forum. I never thought in a million years that I'd be in front of you like this, but I want you to know that my intentions for serving you come from the heart. This campaign has been time consuming, and it's been difficult, and there's times that I've said, "Eloy, what did you get yourself into?" But then I walk the streets of Wesaco and I meet the residents, and they make me even more determined to want to serve them. I'd like to thank everyone for all the support these last couple of months, and for my team, thank you. I couldn't be here without you guys. During my campaign gatherings, I've referred and told the story of watching my mother serve her friends, her neighbors, and even total strangers. And I lost my mom July 2021. And when you lose a loved one, all you have is memories, and you try and you think about the gatherings and the trips you took and the situations that you were in. And I realized something in coping with that pain. I realized that my mother had been teaching me and showing me the way to have compassion for a neighbor and how to serve total strangers. Friends and family, I ask you, I humbly ask you for your vote. I humbly ask you to allow me to serve you and to improve your quality of life in Wesaco. I want to take District 4 in a new direction, a direction of action, new leadership that is going to show results, and listen to all your concerns and all of your needs. I am Eloy De Leon, and I am seeking to be your next City Commissioner, and let's make District 4 the very best district in Wesaco. Thank you very much, and God bless you.
Thank you again to all of the candidates for your participation tonight, and I'll turn it back over to the Chamber of Commerce.
Once again, thank you to all of the candidates for your willingness to be here and share with the forum and all of our audience today, and to those who've joined us online. On behalf of the Wesaco Chamber of Commerce, our business community, we thank all of you. And as I mentioned at our forum yesterday, now the biggest job is all on our citizens, and that's to go out and vote. And we encourage you to vote early. The location that you're at today is a voting site. So you can stop by here at the visitor's center and vote beginning October 24th. And I'm just going to read out the dates for early voting and Election Day. So early voting begins October 24th and will run through Friday, November 4th. You can vote from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There will be a voting day on Sunday, October 30th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And then it'll continue October 31st to the 4th from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And of course, on Election Day, Tuesday, November 8th, 2022, from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. As I mentioned, the most important thing now is for you to go and to vote. And we thank you for being informed voters. And as I mentioned, on behalf of the Wesaco Chamber of Commerce, it is because of our membership, our business community, that we're able to offer events such as these because we are a membership-based organization solely funded by our membership and because of the business community who invests in us to be able to host events like this so that the community at large can be informed. So we're very grateful to our business community who invests in organizations such as the Wesaco Chamber of Commerce so that we can do things like this for our community. I do want to also make mention that we are very grateful to Wesaco ISD's K West team who's here today streaming this event for those online and who has been so helpful with us in making this happen and make this available to our online community for anybody who wasn't able to be here today. So thank you to the WISD K West team for all they do and for the support they offer the Wesaco Area Chamber of Commerce. I also would like to say that on behalf of the Wesaco Chamber, our Board of Directors, we want to continue to serve our community. We're here as a resource to you. The building that you're in also serves as your visitor's center, and something that's very important to us is as a chamber, we are also your tourism people. And so we want people to come to Wesaco, and that's why we ask questions like we do because we love Wesaco. We want people to continue to visit and enjoy this beautiful city. And once again, I just want to say thank you again to all of the candidates for their time, for their efforts. Running for office is not easy, and just as some of them mentioned today, you know, coming up here and sharing their thoughts and answering some of these tough questions is not an easy thing to do. And so we thank you for taking time to serve your community and be a representative for our constituents and for our citizens here in Wesaco. I want to thank everybody once again on behalf of the chamber, and I wish everybody a wonderful evening. Thank you so much.